Good morning, everyone. Pretty much Taos County has a fiber issue and so the internet is down throughout a lot of places. So we'll have this stuff on the screen as soon as we can. Today is August 7th, 2018. It's a little after nine. I hereby call this meeting to an end. Our color roll.
Chairman Omero.
Present.
Commissioner Omero.
Present.
Commissioner Blakeney.
Present.
Everyone would please stand. And Mr. Masas will be in the place.
I plead with the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, commissioners, is approval of the agenda?
Motion to approve. I'll second Mr. Chairman.
Motion, a second to approve the agenda of the August 7th, 2018 regular meeting. Our color roll.
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakeney.
Yes.
Chair Farrow.
Yes.
If everyone would please stand and I ask Mr. Chairman to come forward and share some inspirational words to start our meeting off on the right foot.
Good morning, everybody. Please bow their head. This morning, we asked the Creator for diligence, perseverance, and forbearance. He has provided us with many things, our children, our spouses, our family, our siblings, and our friends. And at this time, we thank Him for those gifts because we must honor them because they are gifts. We thank Him for our health. We thank Him for the beautiful place where we live. We also ask for moisture and for stewardship and care for the land around us. With these words, we give thanks and we have joy for the gifts that we receive. Amen.
Next item on the agenda, item six, citizens' concerns. Anybody here with the public that wishes to address the commission on any issue, we ask that you keep your comments to less than five minutes, but we invite you to come forward and speak to the commission at this time. Seeing none, we ask for the person that is here today for being here. Next item is item seven, minutes. Item A is approval of the July 24th, 2018 regular meeting minutes.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, a motion, a second to approve the July 24th, 2018 regular meeting minutes. Our color roll.
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner Odom.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakeney.
I'm standing.
Chair Farrow.
Yes.
Next item is approval of the July 31st, 2018 special meeting minutes.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
I'll read the second. Our color roll.
Commissioner Odom.
Yes.
Commissioner Odom.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakeney.
Standing.
Chair Farrow.
Item A is our consent agenda. I will read each item on the consent agenda of commissioners. If there's any one item, you will pull that and you will follow into the next business prior to beginning the new business. Item nine. Item A is approval of amendment three to contract TCC 2017-58 with Summit Food Services LLC. Item B is approval of contract TCC 2018-64 with GM Emulsion for Most Rios Road B 007 or Royal Hondo for road improvements. Item C is approval of contract TCC 2018-62 with GM Emulsion for Viallo Road B 060 and Malia for road improvements. Item D is request for approval to donate a 2006 Dodge Caravan to Arriaga County. Item E is approval of memorandum of understanding parking rates between Taos County and the North Central Regional Transit District for regional transit routes in western Mexico. And item F finally is approval of memorandum of understanding parking rates between Taos County and the North Central Regional Transit District for regional transit routes in Pinales, Mexico. Commissioners, that is the consent agenda as presented. I seek a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and set a motion for approval of all items, exception of item C.
B and C.
B and C.
Okay. Second. Okay, a motion, a second to approve items A, D, E, and F of the consent agenda. Our color roll.
Commissioner Odom.
Yes.
Commissioner Odom.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakeney.
Yes.
Chair Farrow.
Yes.
Okay, next item on the agenda is item B of the consent agenda. Approval of contract TCC 2018-64 of GM Emulsion for Most Rios Road, County Road B 007 or Royal Hondo for road improvement. Mr. Haggman.
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. Before you, we need to approve a contract with GM Emulsion for a chip seal similar to what we did on Rabbit Valley Road. This is going to be approximately 285 feet. The contractor is set to go next week. This is, we also call it B007. It's the, this is the road, the Hondo Mesa Road that gets you into the National Monument to the John Denver Bridge. So this is a heavy traffic road by tourists as well as generous homeowners that live in the area.
So, Mr. Chairman, this is the road that is already eight, like, first mile or so?
Yes. So we'll almost get probably another, close to another mile with this chip seal.
Does that bring you close to that intersection where the takes the?
Takes the curve down this.
Down to the alignment?
Yes, yes, Commissioner.
To that area or?
Yeah, it gets us close to that curve to go down.
I see, okay. And what will be the width of the?
For the most part, the width is about 24 feet. So it's one of those wider roads we've had compared to a lot of our other ones.
Commissioner Odom.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. If you could explain, the contract says fox seal, not a chip seal. And I, I under the impression that a fox seal is a better type of grade than a chip seal.
But it's, there's going to be prep of something which we bring in. We're going to get a solid base and then we're going to put in the oil tap down and then we'll put the chips on top of that and then we're going to do another oil tap and chips again and then the fox seal goes on top of the final product. So it's a chip seal, fox seal.
So it's a better road, I think, for our constituents to know both, both these roads are fox sealed. I'd like to see those more, you know, those done in the future. They hold up better.
Right. If you haven't driven to Rabbit Valley, that'll be a good example of the final product. It does look like it's a paved road and we can actually, imagine why we would want to. Remember, you get more money for the buck doing this chip seal, fox seal versus actual lean asphalt?
Commissioner Blakeney.
Yeah, I was just going to ask, if we did do the three inches of asphalt, it would have cost twice that, right?
Right, it would have cost twice that.
And so I think it's a great alternative. And if we take care of it just like the asphalt roads, I think it's going to last quite a long time.
And this is another one, it's Commissioner Odom. We go out maybe every week or every other week to grade it. Sometimes, depending on the work of it, it takes us three weeks. At the moment, we don't do it every two weeks. We're getting calls to go and grade the road, so.
It pays itself off over time. It's a lot of.
And we did look about, last year we did look about putting an additive to harden the road and that would only last us two years. So we can think it was worth spending the, close to $70,000, $80,000 to mix in that additive just to harden the road even though it only lasts two years.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Breakdown of local government road fund monies and, and our?
This is what we had allotted in the 399 from last year and the carryover, the breakdown from last year's monies and $150,000 from the 399 and this year.
So, last year and this year?
Yes.
Pleasure, Commissioner.
Motion approved. I'll second Mr. Chairman.
Motion, a second to approve contract TCC 2018-64 with GM Emulsion for Most Rios Road, County Road B 007. Our color roll.
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner Odom.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakeney.
Yes.
Chair Farrow.
Yes.
Item C is approval of contract TCC 2018-62 of GM Emulsion for Viallo Road, County Road B 060 and Malia for road improvements. Mr. Haggman.
Yes, Chairman, Commissioners, this is similar to what we're doing on B007 except that we are putting the chip seal and tap coat on an already paved road. So we're doing only one penetration on this road. We did go with our new pavement pattern to pave, to seal the, the pot holes already existing. And so we're going to do one single penetration of the chips because it already has the pavement and we'll do a fox seal on top of that.
So now we pretty much with Rabbit Valley, Hondo, and Malia, we've tested all three different types that we may be interested in doing at the end of this. So it's been a good test.
Correct. And the other thing that we, we're considering doing on C110, something similar to what we're doing on Viallo Road, put Malia, is from the turnoff of the most part of us down, we're considering putting this type of chip seal, fox seal on top of that.
To the cemetery.
To the cemetery.
Mr. Chairman, where is my close relative in relation to Rabbit Valley?
It's the main road after it stops becoming a state road.
Similar to Mike?
By the church.
Well, is it by the church or by the senior center that it turns?
196.
Yeah. So it turns from a state road into a county road around the senior center, community center, and then we'll go to the, almost to the end of pavement on this one as well. Wasn't quite sure, but I know it's around the senior center that it changes from the state road.
And were these rents brought to us from Mr. Pacheco early on or to give us kind of an update? These were the roads?
Yes. The road department in each of these districts, this is their proposed projects that they wanted to get done. We accumulated two years' worth of money from last year's LGRF for Viallo Road and we're only getting $25,000 from this year's 399 to complete it. And a separate contract that will be striping on Viallo Road that we matches the existing state striping. So we calculated two years' worth of money to, to get this project. But yeah, it did come from the foreign to Mr. Pacheco. So it's, it's been on, on one of the lists that we've given you over the last two years.
And, Mr. Chairman, who is GM Emulsion? This is basically a new contractor that we've used or have we used them in the past?
We've used them in the past. Gabriel Martinez is the owner of GM Emulsion. He's a former state employee. He's also worked for the Live Highway Frontier. And we used him on the road in Saro a couple of years ago for that chip seal and on Rabbit Valley Road as well. So he does have a state price agreement. He does a lot of work around northern New Mexico, Santa Fe County, uses him quite a bit.
I'm pleased, Mr. Chairman, we are finding other contractors to help us out with our roads.
Pleasure, the commission.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Motion, a second to approve contract TCC 2018-62 of GM Emulsion for Viallo Road, County Road B 060. Our color roll.
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner Odom.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakeney.
Yes.
Chair Farrow.
Yes.
Item nine, under new business, thank you, Ms. Haggman. Under item nine, new business, item A is discussion, consideration, and decision regarding the village request to request to renew the MOU for ambulance services. This will be presented by Mr. Nicholas Masas, the village administrator. And I'd like to recognize Taos County and Village Requesta's newest paramedic. Hi.
Hi. Thanks, Chairman. Absolutely. It's also Requesta's newest paramedic as well, so don't take all the glory from it.
No, I said that. I said Taos County and Village Requesta. Good night, Villa.
Thank you.
All right, Villa, you'll lose it.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. I believe you have your packet, the letter that I sent to Manager Corva along with the MOU. And so we're hopefully coming and asking for your support for the village request. So in the past, we've been able to have your support and that's been able to allow us to have a coordinator in the village request. I think that there was some time where there was a little bit of a, a need for a coordinator to be able to make sure that we have the coverage and we need to respond to calls in the village. And we've been able to do that over the last years. So we appreciate your support for the village request and message. Stand for any questions.
Mr. Chairman, if our manager could talk a little bit about the, the contract?
So, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Omero, this is basically the agreement that we enter in year after year with the village request. It allows them to provide some ambulance services for the northern part of Taos County. And we help supplement a few of their expenses and in turn they give us coverage like that northern part of the county. So.
The dollar value that you give them?
In the past, we've got $100,000. I believe there's a request, increase, increased amount of $120 in this request.
$120 total?
Yes.
And they also cover Taos when our ambulances are on some of their 2,000 transfers a year. They, they in Taos Fire cover Taos. And, Mr. Chairman, it's in our budget?
It is in our budget. We had discussions with, Mr. Masas, about the one-time increase and whether this could be something that would be reoccurring. We hope that it's a one-time, trying to help the village can get established where they're really going to help, um, billing, maybe even helping us with some transports at some point. So we had a really good discussion of the village on how this could help us alleviate some of our transfers and the excess staff constraints when we have to do transfers at certain times. So we're hoping that we build them up to help us, our Taos base. I think it's all about collaboration at this point.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval.
I'll, a second, I have one more question. Okay, motion, a second to approve the MOU between Village Requesta and Taos County for ambulance services. Commissioner Blakeney.
Mr. Chairman, did you itemize it as 100 in the budget and now you have to do a bar? Or how do you handle that?
We did have, so we had an important, other contractual services to cover the entire 120, but we made it, you have to do a bar and cover a different contractual obligation.
And I have a question. Could you explain how your shifts work if it's so long to us? The shift, your shift, are you running it 24/7 or just certain hours? Or how many employees, maybe talk about your staffing?
It's currently, we currently.
If you go to the mic, I can't hear you.
We currently do run 24/7. We work from eight to six, that's our paid staff, and then from six to eight in the morning, we're volunteering. So that's how we work our shifts. We are, we weren't, we didn't have very much money to start out with. So that's how we decided to work our shifts. We, as we progress, we're going to increase our hours and hopefully get to 24/7 coverage.
And how many staff?
Currently, we have three full-time and then we have 17 altogether. So we have three full-time or two full-time at this time.
Right, thank you.
Our color roll.
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner Odom.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakeney.
Yes.
Chair Farrow.
Yes.
Thank you, Brad, again.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Item 10, resolutions and ordinances. Item A is approval of resolution 2018-46, authorizing a direct publication of the title and general summary, time, date, and meeting place for discussion, consideration, and action upon proposed amendment of ordinance 2018-02, Taos County Land Use Regulation. This will be presented by our chief planner, Mr. Nathan Sanchez, and our planning director, Mr. Andrew Reville. Hi, Nathan.
Good morning.
How are you, Chairman?
All right. How are you?
All right.
Commissioners, how are you this morning? Yeah, we're ready, we're in for the ordinance 2018-02, the Taos County Land Use Regulations. We're ready to present a matter of public hearing. We've chosen the date of September 4th, 2018, at 9:00 a.m. And it will be here in the Taos County Commission Chambers, Administrative Building at 105 Offright Street. Would I request that date to hold the public hearing?
Any objections, Commissioners, to?
This is just the, the publication?
Correct.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Motion, a second to approve resolution 2018-46, authorizing a direct publication of the title and general summary, time, date, and meeting place for discussion, consideration, and action upon proposed amendment of ordinance 2018-02, Taos County Land Use Regulation. Our color roll.
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner Odom.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakeney.
Yes.
Chair Farrow.
Yes. Thank you.
Good luck, Dave. A lot of good work on that. Thank you. Under presentations, item 11, they're not here. So Commissioners, motion to adjust the agenda since the presenters, item 11A, are not here.
So I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, so the motion would be that we'll pick that item up during the break between items at a future point in the meeting.
We didn't have to set that up, Mr. Chairman.
No. Our color roll.
Commissioner Omero.
Yes.
Commissioner Odom.
Yes.
Commissioner Blakeney.
Yes.
Chair Farrow.
Yes.
Item 12, the county manager's report of matters. Item A will be an update to the county commission on various items affecting Taos County.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, if I could, I'd like to jump into the proposed resolution that was given to, I believe, both Commissioner Farrow and Commissioner Omero. This resolution is a proposal from the same group that brought us our sanctuary resolution at the board of docked about a year ago. This one is declaring that the removal of children from immigrant parents. Sorry, it just disappeared on me. And I want to read it all into the record. We won't be taking action today, however, I want it to read into the work record and get any concerns or thoughts from the commission and we'll bring it back at the next meeting for approval. But I'll go ahead and read it as it was drafted. This was reviewed by Mr. Adio. And so, "A resolution declaring that the removal of children from immigrant parents is a violation of human rights constitutes cruel and unusual punishment and supporting the efforts of state and federal officials to promote reunification of children with their families. Whereas, as part of its crackdown on illegal immigration, United States Immigration and Customs Enforcement Agency, ICE, has forcibly separated immigrant children from their parents' custody and detained them separately from their families and federal facilities. Whereas, in those cases where immigrants are arrested by ICE while residing in the U.S., parents are often taken from their homes in the presence of their young children and then the children are removed and placed in federal facilities for foster care. Whereas, ICE not only traumatizes these children but also treats them as parentless, takes them into custody and retains them without the right to have contact with their parents. Some of these children may even go unaccounted for. Whereas, in some cases where the parents are deported, their parental rights have been terminated and their children put up for adoption by third parties. Whereas, along the U.S.-Mexico border, ICE is systematically arresting immigrant parents and has removed children from their parents' custody as an intentional punishment for attempting to enter the United States illegally. Whereas, many of the children presently detained are young, without support, and do not even speak the English language. Whereas, many of these children have been held in large prison-like facilities and are sometimes even locked in pens areas that are mounted cages. Whereas, these children are being denied contact with their parents, do not know their parents' whereabouts, and is often unknown whether these children will reunify with their parents. Whereas, hundreds of the children detained by ICE have been moved out across the country and are even unaccounted for. Whereas, parents and immigrant children are often fleeing political persecution, economic hardship, and gang or domestic violence, and are merely seeking safety and asylum in the U.S. Whereas, the U.S. Supreme Court ruled in Santuski v. Kramer that parents have fundamental liberty interests and the right to raise their children without interference by the government except in those cases where children are victims of abuse or neglect. Where the government attempts to interfere in this right, a parent is entitled to fundamental due process such as a hearing before a court of law. Whereas, in Troxville v. Granville, the U.S. Supreme Court held that the interest of parents in the care, custody, and control of their children is perhaps the oldest of the fundamental liberty interests under the Fourteenth Amendment. Whereas, the systematic separation of children from their immigrant parents without due process of law denies fundamental liberty interests guaranteed by the U.S. Constitution. Whereas, the systematic removal of children from their parents is cruel and unusual punishment and constitutes a form of torture that will result in long-term emotional damage to the well-being of these children. Now, be it is all about the commissioners of the Taos County, of the County of Taos as follows. One, systematic removal of children from immigrant parents without due process of law or legal justification is a form of cruel and unusual punishment and is prohibited under the U.S. Constitution and international law. Two, the right of immigrant parents to the care, custody, and control of their children is a fundamental human right that should not be denied by any government. Three, children should not only be separated from their parents when they are endangered, dependent, dumber, and affected. Such separation should be accompanied by the right to a hearing before a court of law and the right to representation by a attorney. Four, children who are separated from their immigrant parents should not be detained separately from their parents in prison-like facilities. Instead, children should be allowed to remain with their parents or the alternative family members should be located in foster homes used as a last resort. Five, where children have already been removed and separated from immigrant parents, diligent efforts should be made to immediately reunite families. Six, children who have been separated should not be systematically placed in foster homes aimed at adopting them to third party and terminating the rights of the biological immigrant parents. Taos County supports efforts by Congress to pass legislation to immediately put an end to the inhumane and cruel practice of separating immigrant children from their parents and detaining these children in prison-like facilities. Eight, Taos County stands behind efforts by Congress to ensure that immigrant children who have already been separated from immigrant parents are reunited with their biological families immediately. Nine, Taos County does not know of law enforcement officials cooperating with ICE in the removal of immigrant children from their parents without due process of law or without providing a safe haven for these children upon removal. Ten, Taos County supports the efforts of local nonprofits engaged in helping to support children who have been detained by ICE to receive basic food, clothing, shelter, and medical care as well as counseling with professionals to address the trauma. Eleven, Taos County further supports the efforts of local nonprofits and underling organizations to ensure that immigrant parents and children receive adequate legal representation, especially to aid in location of missing children and the unreunification of families that have been separated. Twelve, Taos County urges the state of New Mexico and CYFP to act in the best interest of children to support family reunification. Thirteen, Taos County opposes CYFP's cooperation with ICE in seeking to deport young juveniles who are unaccompanied by family or guardians. And finding fourteen, Taos County urges the state of New Mexico to investigate accounts of missing immigrant children who have previously been separated from their families or guardians. That was the proposed resolution as provided to the board. And I stand for any questions, discussion, or if you have any concerns that you want to address off the record, you can always email this to me or let me know. you can always email this to me or let me know. You can incorporate those changes into the future resolution if there's any.
Commissioner Blackenham.
Thank you, Chairman. The resolution doesn't seem to limit the at-border separations. It seems to me to also want to limit a situation where there's an illegal immigrant and law enforcement arrests the immigrant, and the immigrant has children. I don't, I don't believe that I could agree with that. It's a different situation than the separation at the border that occurred. I also think that the repeated reference to prison-like conditions is not always true. There are many, there were many, I don't condone the separation at the border in any way, but some of the facilities that were set up for the children were not prison-like. So those would be my two off the top of my head. I would like the chance to read it again. I couldn't find it in my packet, but that's probably me. Anyway, thank you.
Thanks, Chairman. Do you have... Commissioner Blackenham.
Mr. Manager, item 12, well, 13, and 14. Do we know the policy of CYFD? Do they cooperate with ICE in deporting young juveniles? And what is the policy when young children come across the border? Maybe just some clarification on item 13 and, you know, relating to ICE and...
I believe you have contacted the author of it for the basis of why they put that in there. And that would be, I'll say it, and I'm not sure if it helps him with it.
We could definitely...
This is word for word what they submitted to myself, Commissioner Omero.
And we could definitely look into that. I don't know that answer, so I could try and...
Mr. Chairman, Tom, if you could elaborate a little bit on your first objection, on your first thought.
If an illegal immigrant who has allegedly committed a felony is living in our community, and there's children in the household, this seems to preclude the arrest of that person. Maybe I'm wrong, I have to reread it more carefully. But, you know, that happens, right? I mean, sometimes that happens. Sometimes somebody is arrested for a felony, and there's children, and they have to go to CYFD, whether they're illegal immigrants or regular citizens. And so I have a concern about that.
And what would your...
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't draft it so broadly. I would draft it in a way that limits it to the issue at the border. You know, the problem with the issue at the border is if a parent and a child attempt to cross illegally, the courts have said that they can't be held, that a child cannot be held in detention for longer than 20 days. And so that's why they're separated, because they want to hold the parent, and they know it's going to take longer than 20 days. So they separate the kids, and they try to make some accommodations for them because they know the parent is going to be in custody for longer than 20 days. It's a mess. It's a mess, and I'm happy to throw my support behind finding a way not to separate these children from dependents if they try to cross illegally. But I have a concern with the potential...
And if they're, if they're concerned, so...
Oh, Deanna, when would you expect this to be approved?
Based on the feedback today and thinking a few of the changes, I'd like to be back to the next meeting for you to be able to take action on. So, I will take your concerns and feedback into consideration, and we'll send out a draft of the potential changes before we actually hear it again at the next meeting. If there's any other issues, we'll keep letting you know, hoping that... But that is exactly how it was drafted, as Chairman Fondo mentioned, from the authors. So I want the board to be able to hear exactly how it was authored and what was presented to us so that you understand where it came from and what the intent, I guess, was.
Just another observation, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Sure.
Maybe some reference to Homeland Security?
All right.
I feel this was written, like he was pretty angry. So maybe he's had some second thoughts or something. Call CYFD out like that is kind of harsh.
Yeah, because I don't know if they're actually doing that or not, with the policy. I hate to bring that up if we don't have some kind of proof.
I can answer the points that are going over all the paper, and I'll go back to the author and kind of discuss it with him and see if he has any intention of softening up on his own. It's probably a good observation that there's a lot of emotion into the resolution. So that's all I have on that item, Mr. Chairman. Moving on to the next item, and I, Mr. Behill's still here, but we've had discussions between the counties of Taos County, Water Conservation Districts, who have been working with the Rocky Mountain Youth Corps and the Lord Foundation to work on some Taos Aseca restoration projects. So I just wanted to inform the board that we've already moved forward on this. We have an MOU with Taos County and Water that we've had in place for many years. And so we've always appreciated that they are the kind of subject matter expert when it comes to asecas and soil and water. And so in this case, we were approached by Rocky Mountain Youth Corps to try to play a part to this project on the Aseca restoration. And I was grateful to Mr. Behill of Taos County and Water for taking lead and basically, you know, telling, helping us prioritize these projects and getting these projects done throughout the county. So I'm going to go ahead and talk about a few projects that have already been done. And just so the board is aware, we did contribute $10,000 to this project. I believe the town of Taos also contributed, as well as Soil and Water and the Lord Foundation. So about two weeks ago, up in northern Taos County, the Aseca Madre de Costilla had some work done to it. Last week, the Aseca Pinasco Sur had worked on to it. And this week, the Rocky Mountain Youth Corps is working on the Francisco Impinavo Martinez Aseca. All of these have been prioritized by the Taos County and Water, and what was really performed was site prep for pre-construction. They weren't cleaning asecas, they were just aiding in site preparation for construction in these asecas. So, Mr. Behill's here, do you have any questions specific to the projects, or there's any questions with me?
Mr. Chairman, I'd really like to hear from Mr. Behill and Vicente Fernandez just a brief, some brief remarks about the projects and what it means to Taos County, if they may.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Vicente Fernandez, I'm the mayor of the Rio Bernardo Southside Pitch. And along with Taos County and Water Conservation, they've done a great big service to the Aseca and to the community. You know, I would greatly appreciate any help that you can give to the soil and conservation. They do a great job, not just for us here in Tanyong, but for the whole countywide. So I know Peter's heart is in it, his staff is in it, and we thank the county. And historically, the county and the city have never really gotten involved in the Aseca issues. These past two years, they have, and it's been great, you know. The county and people see their involvement, and they really appreciate what you're doing. And as a mayor of the home and a participant, I would like to thank you for all your support that you give us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Vicente, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, you have a map? Do you want to show us?
Oh, no, that's...
You have something else?
That's something else that I'm working on now.
And will this also help with the issue of Barciante's not cleaning the ditches in Rocky Mountain Stepping Up? Or not, maybe?
The thing is, is that it's a different issue, you know, and it all works hand in hand to get it done. There is a lot of maintenance that needs to be done to all the asecas, and this is just another, another way of helping out. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Fondo, I'll mention it again. This isn't an effort to actually clean the asecas. This is more of an effort to assist the Aseca, local public bodies, with some of the more involved projects that they have. I mentioned site prep, pre-construction, things like that. And we've been very careful not to step on the local public bodies that the Aseca is established to be. So we don't want to overexert ourselves, but we certainly want to serve as a partner and see how we can lead with it. But we don't want to get into the practice of cleaning asecas on behalf of the local body. So I just wanted the board to be aware of our participation in this and to thank Taos County and Water for taking lead. And certainly, I'm always grateful when there's another public body that has the expertise to do something that the county doesn't. So, you know, it's great to have that partner over there. And I echo what the mayor almost said, we have good collaboration, and we certainly want to support the efforts of the Asecas and the local public body.
Mr. Chairman, do we need to approve this working agreement at some point, or have you already signed it?
So, as I mentioned, the MOU was already in place, that's already been approved. This is just a working agreement that I did sign as the county manager. The amount was in my threshold to sign off on. It was a $10,000 commitment that we made.
And the next time...
So this is just for information...
Who says more? $20,000. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. So, just some items to alert the board on. We will be hosting a press conference this afternoon here in our chambers at 2:30 in regards to the sheriff's work over the weekend at the compound at Miramaine. So that will be happening this afternoon. Chairman?
No, I'm waiting for the next question.
Well, we've had a busy few weeks, so we met last week, passed our budget. Thank you all, we submitted that to the EFA, and the auditors were here last week. We held our entrance conference for the audit. Each of you should be getting some kind of correspondence from the auditors, of course, to be able to have a free discussion with them. If there's any concerns or questions that you have, you can contact them directly. So they give you that opportunity to have a direct line to the auditors, each of the Commissioners. So they were here last week, we got a good start, and we hope that to wrap up the audit in timely fashion, we're shooting for an exit conference somewhere around November, 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 right before Thanksgiving, with the due date of December 1st. So I think we're right on track to get that accomplished. We had a good trip to Washington, D.C. I was grateful for the representation from the board. I felt like it was a great opportunity for Taos County to kind of see and maybe understand a little bit more what this current administration is focusing their efforts on. And so it was a very quick road trip, but I think it might be pretty well considered. And stand for any questions? I mean, oh, one more thing to make note of, we are going to extend the completion date for the Scortas Bridge. We are starting our PR campaign on that, letting everybody know that that bridge will not be scheduled to be completed until September 3rd at this point. I have contacted Taos County's post pools in UNM Taos to alert them, let them know. So they are making arrangements to have an alternative route requested until right after later day when we anticipate complete project. Some of the delays may have been, there was multiple factors, but at this point, you may see ample construction, and we're making good progress. We hope to face some cement this week, but it's the cure time that takes a little while before we can end that traffic, cross over that bridge. So it may seem complete, but it's not done until it completely cures, and we have not allowed traffic to properly access that bridge. So we're just asking for continued patience from our residents in that area and everybody that is obviously being very patient while we complete that bridge.
Is there going to be a penalty assessed against anyone, or...
Our contract does stipulate a $750 per day fine for liquidated damages with the contractor. We do intend to hold them accountable based on that. There is some potential weather delays that are allowed, and there may be some other acts that if can be proven, we may collaborate and work with. But at this time, we're absolutely holding them accountable and instituting that fine per day until the project is completed.
Mr. Chairman?
Chris Blackenham.
What is, what are the reasons for the delay?
There was multiple issues, but the contractor kind of likened it to remodeling an old adobe home. We began to replace the bridge, we remediated the bridge. So as we tore it apart, took out the girders, things like that, we encountered issues that we weren't quite aware of until we got into it. So one of the big things was taking the girders off-site to a company in Albuquerque that did sanding, as they got into it, they realized there was more salt and soda on there that they needed to remove, so it did take a little extra time. Another delay was in the decking. We had to, the contractor had to go find the decking, I believe in Alabama. And so that was a delay that to go out and pick that up. And so they're back on track. It was a few other issues here at the end, and we actually had some weather. We were back on-site trying to get some of the approaches done. The weather did have some delay on it, but for the most part, we've been along well, and we see the end in sight, so we're all working together as a team to get the project completed.
And when do schools start?
Friday, Friday this week.
So, Mr. Chairman, at $750,000, did I hear you...
$750,000.
$750,000?
$750,000, not $1,000 per...
No, the total cost of the bridge.
Oh.
I was under the impression it was a complete replacement, a brand-new structure, and you're saying they're just remodeling this bridge?
They rehabilitated the bridge. The cost wasn't, but it was $560,000, I think, or something like that. Yeah, we took it all the way down to the beams, and we just rehabilitated the beams, the girders. We replaced the decking completely, and then obviously replacing the cement and the guardrails. But for the most part, we reused the girders at the bottom, reused the buttress sits that were already in place.
The concrete?
The concrete buttress sits that were in place. Any more of a new project that have been, probably delayed the project. We've been at work with Army Corps of Engineers, get a lot of environmental permitting that would have needed to be done in order to get into the river and start from scratch. So that was a big reason why we moved to rehabilitation route instead of starting from scratch.
So, Mr. Chairman, the MNC Conference, it's a call. There were several potential contractors that might have been able to expedite this. I think, I don't know if you had the time to go to those various booths, but one was a rad rock yard out of Oklahoma that provides all the kind of bridge materials and steel already in, made for smaller bridges. So if I at some point could give you all that contact information throughout Oklahoma for future projects.
We learned a lot from this project, as Taos County contractors certainly learned a lot. And it's been a very long time since we've done a bridge of this magnitude, and we're certainly more prepared for future bridge projects than main contractors.
Commissioner Blackenham.
Thank you, Chairman. First for the public's benefit, in case there's any concerns, I think we should make sure I'm ready to bring out the chairman's phone number.
No, they can call behind. I'll go ahead and field his phone. And as I mentioned, we are trying to get the word out, so we're also going to send out the address to all the residents. We're working on completing those addresses, leaving them out to April, March.
I'm pretty sure they're going to go with those letters, because it'll be done for a long time, so... 50-year bridge? Stand for any other questions of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I have, I do. Mr. Manager, could you please review UNM's video contracting services? I attempted to find them online to review previous board meetings. Didn't know where to look, couldn't find anything. to look, couldn't find anything, and so I want to make sure that we are archiving all our meetings and also when the website gets revamped, that we have a link to these meetings. And if that's not being done, we have to find a way to do that, but I, am I under the impression they're not streaming right now because the internet is out?
I don't know that, I'm not sure, I would assume that if no internet, it was streaming, yes.
But could you make sure we're archiving these meetings?
Sure.
They're not just disappearing somewhere into the internet void? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Black. Next item is item 13, under A, who considers to be considered a future commission meeting. Anything else? Commissioner, announce.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the Mexico County's board meeting that we had in August, last week. Very important meeting, we went over some of the legislative issues, discussed and moved to support the majority of them, various issues that will be brought up again during the legislature and supported by the counties, the 33 counties that represent the Mexico County's Board. Many of whom included the, you know, issues from the 911 affiliate, the policy committee issues concerning HB2 appropriations, behavioral health, fire protection fund, whistle lawyer protection act, the Forte Tur Act reform, the EMS memorial tax reform, and a few others. Mr. Chairman, once I have a clean draft of what will be presented, I'll make sure that all of you receive that via the number.
Thank you, because on the EMS Act, 911, and fire fund, and fire marshal's office can move, I'll be attending, representing counties that are meeting in Roswell, Municipal League on the 28th, I think it is this month, in Roswell. So if you give me stuff, so I have that just to present.
Yeah, as soon as I can come to the new, from the staff, it should probably be before the end of this week, I will get you that information. Also, Mr. Chairman, I had sent our managers some information, I sent, I actually texted them a form of a breakdown of a presentation that was given to us by executive director Brian Flynn from the oil and natural gas industry here in the state of New Mexico. And county, you know, Taos County, they gave us a breakdown for each individual county. And the county, of course, we don't have any oil wells, I'm aware of, we receive very little, our schools do, at least. And if you drive, travel down south, there's what they call a four-plex, there's four counties, including the county and the county where, same as the county where Carlos Bad is in, and a couple of others in that corner, they're, they're doing very well, you know. They don't have the beautiful, in my opinion, the beautiful natural resources that we have here in New Mexico. We don't have their oil wells or the money, but it would be really awesome to somehow approach the legislature about how more of that money from the shale that industry can come to.
But I don't want to share any, we've become a sober capitalist and I don't want to have to share any of that.
Someday we will do that, but in the meantime, there's a lot of money to be earned from the oil industry and they're all doing very well, Mr. Chairman.
Very well.
While the rest of the state is suffering.
How about that? Tell them.
Something ridiculous, huh? Something. So I'm going to give this back to Mr. Chairman to our manager and, you know, cut out those and go through that, digest it, and maybe come up with some ideas.
All right, thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is item 14, Taos County Board Commissioners, making a closed session. I think before we do that, we'll come up to that and go to adjournment, I would introduce a motion for us to postpone to an indefinite time, item 11A, so that we move to a later time in this meeting, it's obviously not going to happen, so.
I'll second Mr. Chairman.
Call the board.
Commissioner Black?
Yes.
Commissioner Black?
Yes.
Commissioner Black in there?
Yes.
Chair Brown?
Yes. Okay, so we'll get that in the next meeting.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, it was a presentation informational item anyway, it was basically bond council informing us on a bit of a delay to sell the school bonds and get those completed, which I believe are going to be completed anyway at the end of this week, so if it does come back at another meeting, it may be active, the fact that everything is complete, but it'd still be a good informational presentation for the board to understand why there was a bit of a delay in those bonds.
Okay, well, because of that vote, it would have to happen, I believe, the third meeting in 10, 10 months, we're having during this meeting. Okay? So item 14, the executive session, pending litigation of Gonzalez versus County of Taos, United States District Court case number 1752-NF-KHR. These matters may be discussed in executive session under the exemption 10-15-1H7, which allows discussion of pending permanent litigation. Mr. Audio, is it your recommendation to go into closed session at this time?
It is, Mr. Chairman. Move for approval of going into executive session, Mr. Chairman, does it take place here or upstairs?
Thank you. Oh yeah, I need a second.
Sorry.
Go to the second to go into closed session under the exemption 10-15-1H7. Are you calling?
Commissioner Black?
Yes.
Commissioner Black?
Yes.
Commissioner Black in there?
Yes. So we're thinking about 20 minutes, I'm going to search with your staff and...
You're not just talking hours, just a briefing, why don't you just...
No.
Motion to come back into open session, so, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
First of all.
Commissioner Black?
Yes.
Commissioner Black?
Yes.
Commissioner Black in there?
Yes.
Chair Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Audio, would you give a report as to what was discussed in the executive session?
I will, Mr. Chair. There was one matter of litigation discussed in closed session, that was the only matter discussed and there was no action taken in the closed session.
We met the exemption.
We did.
Motion to approve the report.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman. Call the board.
Commissioner Black?
Yes.
Commissioner Black?
Yes.
Commissioner Black in there?
Yes.
Chair Brown?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is motion to adjourn. So move, some of us favor stay eye.
Aye.
Thank you all.